Welcome everyone, this regular meeting of Central Berkshire Regional School Committee will come to power at 7:04 PM on January 20th. Thank you for being here, everyone. Just to note, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded and there's only one audience that has recorded this meeting. I see none will move on. All those at table, please stand. We'll go over this.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Move to approve warrant number AP 2019-12 dated December 28, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $1,2651.62. We have motion in the second to approve warrant number AP 2019-12. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-13 dated December 27, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $624,037.42.
We have motion in the second to approve warrant number PR 2019-13. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Two extensions, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-13D dated December 27, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $238,491.15.
We have motion in the second to approve warrant number PR 2019-13. See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-13D dated December 27, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $238,491.15.
We have motion in the second to approve warrant number PR 2019-13. See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR, I'm sorry, warrant number AP 2019-13 dated January 11, 2019. Accounts payable in the amount of $430,80.42.
We have motion in the second to approve warrant number AP 2019-13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor then? Any opposed? Extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-14 dated January 10, 2019. Payroll in the amount in the amount of $635,576.16.
We have motion in the second to approve warrant number PR 2019-14. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Two extensions, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-14D dated January 10, 2019. Accounts payable in the amount of $136,296.11.
We have motion in the second to approve warrant number PR 2019-14. See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District Committee, School Committee, accept the donation of $500 from the College Club for the purchase of Legos for the special needs classes at O'Connor Regional High School as recommended by the district treasurer. Second.
We have motion in the second for accepting donations from the College Club for O'Connor Special Needs Classes. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $330 from the College Club for the purchase of headsets and storage for the Spanish classes at O'Connor Regional High School as recommended by the district treasurer. Second.
We have motion in the second for acceptance of the donation from the College Club for O'Connor Spanish Classes. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $584.71 to the Beckett-Washington gift account from O'Connor Studios for portraitures at Beckett-Washington as recommended by the district treasurer. Second.
We have motion in the second to accept the donation from O'Connor Studio. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $2,000 from the Cobb Society of Western Massachusetts to be awarded in honor of Aaron Barnes to the General Scholarship Fund as recommended by the district treasurer. Second.
We have motion in the second to accept the donation from the Cobb Society of Western Massachusetts. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $2,000 from the Berkshire Health Group to the VHG Employee Wellness Fund as recommended by the district treasurer. Second.
We have motion in the second for acceptance of the donation from the Berkshire Health Group. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Extensions? We have motion carries and the district would like to thank all these organizations that provided the donation for us. Next on the agenda is communications report of the chair. We still have a vacancy in the town of Washington and I look forward to sit on that. And then we have our report on the MASs, the joint conference, school committee and superintendent conference that was held last week. So we would like to go first.
Okay, so I'll start. So Rick Wagner and I attended the MASc conference. And first of all, we'd like to thank the committee for giving us the opportunity to attend that conference. It was very informative. We arrived on Wednesday. We networked with other delegates and attended the keynote dinner with Lori. The guest speaker at that dinner was Jeff Riley, the DSC Commissioner of Education. We also met Congressman Richard Neal. So that was very informative, very nice coming over to our table. The attendance, feedback from Rick was that attendance at prior conferences was higher than the conference that we went to. And Rick, part of the conference was we went around and got stickers at all the tables, visiting the tables and visiting with the vendors. And Rick won a hundred dollar gift card, which was very nice. And Lori did a share. The funny part was that we had gone to hear who won and we missed it. And then Lori sent us a text saying, "You won!" So all the effort of going and talking to people was nice. So Wednesday, we attended seminars and we interacted with, networked with other people. One of the seminars that I attended was called Change Can Happen: Four Pillars to Create a Successful and Create Successful and Lasting Cultures. The presenters were Paul Viura, the Ashland Assistant Superintendent, and Maureen Cohen from Menden Upton District. The four pillars that they emphasized were think differently, just do it, capacity building, and connect with students. And the key takeaways was that we should all strive to be superheroes for our students. I thought that was a very powerful message. One example of thinking differently is to call students to the principal's office for a good news call of the day. So instead of calling the parent to say your child misbehaved or your child did something wrong, they are called into the principal's office to say that they did something right and that is highlighted. So it takes away the stigma of seeing the principal for corrective action or discipline. They also participated in an exercise where we were given a picture of an object and you had to describe it to the other people in the room by saying, "Back in my day." So the picture that I was given was a typewriter and you couldn't reference anything when you were describing it. You couldn't reference anything that people would know. So you had to look at it and say, "Well, for example, it's kind of a box and it has these things that you push and try to get people to guess what it was that your picture was." And the whole purpose of that was to illustrate how hard it is for people, and I'm dating myself, of my generation to communicate to the younger generation because, for example, they've never seen a rotary dial phone. And so just being able to communicate without using common language that we know made it very difficult to try to communicate what the picture was. The second exercise we did was we broke into groups to identify barriers about what we were able to control and what we were not able to control. And then we tried to come up with solutions to the barriers by thinking along the lines of what if or how instead of we can't or but. And to strive to have new mindsets towards achieving results. For example, one of the things that was identified is that the jobs of the future are all in AI and engineering and programming. They're not the traditional jobs that we have grown to know. Menden Upton also shared their strategic plan for 2018 to 2023 focusing on their portrait of graduate competencies, being mindful learners, global citizens, solution seekers, effective communicators, inspired innovators, and skilled collaborators. The next seminar that Rick and I attended was New Planning for the 21st Century. The presenters were Dorothy Presser and Jim Hardy from the MASc. They're field directors for MASc. The discussion of having a long-term plan for the district with a roadmap towards goals and specific measurable goals. SWAT was the acronym they used, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and identifying ways to solve each of those things. And on Thursday, seminar we attended was Future Perspectives on School Design and Construction. The person presenting was the West Springfield High School principal. And one of the key thoughts that he portrayed was that the building project, when it was built, the school was emphasized to have a lot of big, large common spaces. And he was quite honest with the group to say that in his school, there were large common spaces that are underutilized. And so for people that are looking to build new schools, to just kind of keep that in mind and in the picture, it looked really nice. But when it came to practical use, they found that they were struggling a little bit to use those spaces to their fullest potential. And then the last seminar that I went to on Thursday was about transforming underperforming schools through educator evaluation framework. The presenter was Stefania Rochellis, the Chief Instructional Officer for Springfield Schools. And the focus of this seminar was a discussion of a Level 4 school in Springfield that was turned around in two years. And some of the methods that were used to turn that around were unannounced classroom observations. They transferred or terminated non-performing teachers who were not on board with the corrective action plan. And most importantly, the superintendent supported the principal in this. Everyone on the team was required to buy into the corrective action plan. Goals were monitored and reviewed by the team weekly. So that particular seminar was very interesting because I was thinking about some of our current situations. And then we also attended the MASc Leadership Banquets and the guest speaker was Jimmy Chingle, the comedian.
Who ran unsuccessfully for office.
Yes, and talked about that. Then on Friday, we attended the Division 6 meeting and we also attended the delegate seminar. They, quite coincidentally, did not have Rick or I registered as a delegate, so we waited in line and were actually featured in the MSC bulletin on page 2, just to illustrate that Rick was in front of me and so he got to be the delegate. There were discussion and a couple of amendments basically around wording, but we followed the direction of the committee and voted according with. So that's, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right then, we might have to subway reports on expectations. Thank you both again for going. And next year when this rolls around again, we're gonna, well, actually we'll be coming out June, July timeframe, because we get the early bird special prices for that one time. And if anyone's interested in going and signing up, naturally we'll record the year. That might change, but we give opportunities to people to go to that. Of course, it is during the week, so Wednesday through Saturday, so.
The Governor of Education gave a speech also. And he seemed to focus primarily on the disadvantage, was no really big cycle news about changing anything. They did speak about the testing process and he was known for his own value. But he seemed like a very likable kind of individual, but I was disappointed that that's all he focused on back. And I wish he had expanded especially on this. It's a great conference. You all should go. Everybody should have a shot at it. It's the toughest thing, the drive down there, obviously, with the tape. And you're in a hotel for a couple of days and the days are completely filled. The time you're up and the time you go, it's busy. So thank you.
All right, we'll start with curriculum. Our members.
Yes, we met this evening prior to this meeting and we had a full house and it was wonderful. And so thank you all for being there. We continue our discussion about PBIS. We had started it at our last meeting and we brought that up as a topic we'd love more information on. And we also continued to discuss NESCAS and the scores there. But to get to PBIS first, I was really personally looking for a connection between PBIS and academic achievement. And it's a little too early to have those results yet because it's just Craneville is the first school, I guess, who's really implementing it. And they're doing a great job and Annie gave us a lot of good information. But there's really only soft data right now because the official rollout has not yet begun. It will begin January, February, but they're working on their core values. They do have their core values, which are Craneville students will be proud, scholarly, responsible. Did I have all of them? Respectful. Right? Got it? Okay. But some of the soft data she was talking about was that she has seen an increase in positive behaviors and a decrease in some of the referrals for not being appropriately behaved. There's also a group that's starting, a social emotional learning club for children who are having some difficulties navigating through the social arena. And unfortunately, there are more and more kids, I think, who are having those difficulties. And my two senses, it has something to do with this because they're not playing outside so much, but that's another story. PBIS Academy is happening at NESCAS, so there is a very strategic plan in place for teachers to begin the implementation of it or identifying the core values and that will be happening. I guess Beckett-Washington and Kittredge are at different places too, but they're implementing it as well. In terms of NESCAS and their test scores, I did learn that School Works is on site and they will be looking at root cause analysis and their report will be out January 16th and probably to us in March. So we'll have more information then to share with the full committee. Edge Elastic is a digital platform that's being used now and teachers are very excited about it. And Leslie's going to send me the link and I'm going to remember to send her an email to ask her if she's going to leave the link. So we'll get some more information there. And I think that's going to be, the gist of our work this year is really digging deeper into what's going on in each of the schools in terms of data. So you'll hear more and more of this. And if you have any questions that you'd like to pose to our group that I can pose to whomever, please let me know. You can send me an email or ask away. But it's a good group and I'm looking forward to digging deep with them. Oh, and we have, our next meeting will be February 14th.
Do you want to do the 20th, the February 24th meeting so you have the Edge Elastic data?
Sure.
Not to you, but that would give, that one more meeting and we would have that.
Is that okay?
Yes.
What's that? Our next meeting will be the 24th.
Not the 14th.
So we'll have more data.
28, I'm sorry, February 28th. So January 20th, February 28th. Sorry.
28, okay.
Post February 15th, February 28th.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Plus, just another one I was looking at, February 14th is going to be a very busy day for us. A key decision will be made that day. Both the school building committee and the school committee will be voting on a motion that goes forward for the warrants that go forward to the town's behavior. So if you can, please make sure you make that meeting on this authority. Thank you. Finance, Mr. Poson.
Okay, so the finance subcommittee meeting was on December 18th at the central office. Our discussion revolved around the preliminary fiscal 2020 budget. The preliminary budget figure is $27,799,029, an increase of $390,158 over last year. That percentage increase for the preliminary budget is 1.42%. Included in the budget is the school resource officer line item, which was requested to be added into the budget. There's an anticipated overall increase in insurance cost of 2%, sorry, 2%, which includes an expected 5% decrease in the retiree insurance. And those figures will be voted on by the Berkshire Health Group on January 28, 2019. Transportation increase is estimated to be at 4%. This is the third year of a five-year contract projected and are projecting the budget reflects a projected retirement of two staff who will not be replaced and will be filled by existing staff. This is as a result of reduced class size at NESCAS. The excess and deficiency calculation, there's a handout in your packet. This was certified in the amount of $1,372.136. We also, during the meeting, entered into an executive session under Mas General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, by unanimous vote to discuss strategy and cooperation for negotiations with the CBA unit. And then we adjourned the meeting following that particular discussion. The next meeting will be January 15, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the central office. And our topics will be rural aid, fiscal year 2020 budget discussion, possibly the building status update, and executive session to review the minutes from the past executive session.
Yeah, any questions? What was the date of that meeting?
The date of our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, January 15, 2019.
So with that meaning, you start, you can start to dig into the budget. Any other questions? All right, move on to policy.
All right, so we have not met since our December meeting, but tonight we're looking to get approval of a second reading for the revision of the district bylaws, Article 4. Just to kind of refresh everybody, we've met during the fall. Chair Armakas brought some things to our attention to look at forming a new subcommittee. We looked at that to make those changes. In order to do that, we need to amend our district bylaws specifically. The changes to make up the committee's subcommittees, well, to redo the school committee's subcommittees. And what we're going to do is add the new subcommittee. That subcommittee is going to focus on student and staff safety, environmental impacts on student and staff comfort, and the social, emotional environment of our schools. So we will be looking to add that subcommittee, do a second reading tonight. Also, with the second reading, we'll be looking to dissolve the technology subcommittee. So with that, the technology subcommittee being dissolved, their charters, which they had three, will be placed within the following subcommittees. So charter number one was to review the district technology infrastructure and human resource needs and make recommendations to the school committee for improvements and upgrades. That will be moved to finance. Review and update as necessary the acceptable use policy. That will be moved to policy. Annual review of the district technology plan to ensure that technology, infrastructure supports, educational program and curriculum, needs and administrative and financial needs make, and make recommendations to the school committee for improvement or upgrades to satisfy such needs. That will be moved to the curriculum subcommittee. Let's move down here. So the new subcommittee will be named the Safety and Wellness Subcommittee. Their charters, we came up with three of them. The first one will be to review and make recommendations to the school committee as it relates to student and staff safety and security. The second one will be review and make recommendations to the school committee as it relates to environmental impacts on student learning and on student environmental impacts on student learning and on student and staff comfort. The third will be to review and make recommendations to the school committee as it relates to the social emotional learning environment. So, with that, we'd like to make a motion for the second reading. If we approve this second reading, it will then amend our bylaws and this will become part of our bylaws. So, with that, I'd like to make the motion be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the second reading revisions to the district bylaws, Article 4, as recommended by the policy subcommittee. Second.
Okay, we're motioning a second, we're approved. Second reading revisions to the district bylaws, Article 4. Is there any discussion? Just last.
That seems pretty logical with the way you divided up the three sections of the technology for what the subcommittee should go to. I want to suggest a fourth section. Now that we've gone down this path of supporting other school districts, you may want to increase for worry for that as well. And that certainly needs oversight, like for example, right now, both brick and mortar is $60 a week and that was something that was not pursued and should, you know, address and review. You know, so that's just an example, but you know, if you look at some of the subcommittees that would be great, that function to oversee the...
I think that falls within the first, in the first charter, which is review district technology infrastructure and human resource needs. So, I think the human resource needs, I believe that those two people fall within the human resource needs of that charter.
Okay.
I think it's covered.
Okay. Any real discussion? If you see no, it's in favor of the subcommittee, you can give us an aye.
Aye.
And opposed? These messages. What she carries, we have a new subcommittee and we'll move on with it. So, with that noted, I'm trying to figure out how best to reorganize. We have, I have some influence with people. I want to try to honor those as best as I can. My inclination is to try to get the subcommittees intact as best as we can. So, I guess, I know the members gave me some input, but if you wouldn't mind, now that we have a new subcommittee, if people would let me know if they want to make any changes, please let me know by Friday or next week. And then I want to make sure that by our next meeting, our meeting on the 24th, that we got all the committees intact. I think right now it's really important, just to stress it, that we need to finally finance alone because, you know, they're going to be starting on track with the budget. They've already started to look at it. Personnel, we'll try to do alone. If there's any, you know, if there's anyone that is, even some of the chairs will probably be, because most of them are, you know, remain where they are, but you know, we've got some room to shuffle around if someone wants to change their boss and that, so you know, please let me know. Just something to know. Okay? Personnel. Are there any other questions for policy? Okay, personnel.
So, our next negotiating session is on the 23rd of January. Does that have nothing to report?
Okay. And we're coming to the building project. We have another tour. I have meetings since last month, January 4th.
Just the new dates. We have January 21st at 10:00 AM, there'll be a tour. January 26th at 10:00 AM, there'll be a tour. That's the Monday holiday and the Saturday. And then January 31st at 6:00 PM, we'll be pushing out information about those to get more and more people into the building so that people will have that opportunity. We are filming another TV show and that will air as well. And then March 6th, we're having a parent university and there'll be a session on the school building at that time. And Mr. Robb's going to try and also offer tours right before so people who have any interest can get into the building and see it. Also, just one more thing I want to add, so if there isn't anybody in the community that wants to get into the building, Mr. Robb will really be very flexible and give them a tour if they just reach out and contact him if none of those times work.
Could you give me the dates of the tours again? The 21st of January and then...
26th, full 10:00 AM tours, if you are able to be there, if you're a school building committee member or a school committee member who just wants to support. And the 31st at 6:00, the district wide, you'll go out tomorrow with those, so you'll get that blast as well. And then if you have other ways you can push that out, please do. Thank you.
So, I guess there are a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. Some of the committee members brought to our attention that there's been some misinformation going around about the school building project and where it stands right now. One piece of information was some people didn't, some people were asking about going back to the summer about the renovation versus the new building. And there were a lot of, like 14 different options that we had. That decision was already made and it was made based upon community sessions. So, we didn't have an awful big turnout to the community sessions, so people really wanted their voice to be heard, they should have, they should have covered those. We're going to be working kind of the executive team, school building project, in clarifying some of that process and how the decisions were made. But kind of what it boiled down to is that people liked the fact, and you can add this if you like, people liked the fact that the new building is really 21st century and there's not much we can do with the old building that they're 21st century. There are significant problems with the current building. And to keep that up and running, you know, for any term, any length of time, it's going to be extremely difficult if not possible. So, if you're going to renovate a school, you're going to be starting with, you're going to be starting with a difficult foundation, a very inflexible foundation, like even the gym. The gym needs to be replaced. You can't fit a legitimate, not a legitimate, the size of the gymnasium that the state mandates in the footprint that we have. You can't do it. You've got to tear the whole thing down. So, people don't understand when they ask those questions sometimes that to renovate the school, you know, that and top of the fact that you're really talking about maybe the $10 million difference between what... So, if we renovate, we don't get any money from the state for renovation. We get zero. For a new building, we get a lot from the state. We get at least a little less than half, okay? The reimbursement rate's 54% roughly, but you know, we don't, we don't see that much because not everything's an eligible cost. So, you know, I want to make sure that people understand what, what we're getting, why these decisions were made, what I know. The other thing that concerns me is, is people don't understand the consequences of negative vote, okay? The first thing is if, if the vote doesn't turn out favorable on April 6th, we're going to come back again in a couple of months. So, nothing in the parameters can change. We can't change the price. We can't change any of the motions brought forward, the way the current planning package will be that we vote on the 14th. That can't change by law. We are going to come back and it's only going to be that, you know, we get more information out there, we better inform people and hope that they change the vote. So, that's going to be two assessments to the community if we don't get it the first time, all right? Because we pay, we pay the towns to hold these votes. That means the whole district pays the towns to hold these votes. It's not a big cost, but it's a cost. If that fails, then, then, then we have to come back and start making a plan for major upgrades. Guess what? We're not going to come back with a $5 million or a $10 million, it's going to be at least a $35 million asking. So, you're not going to get out of it. And if that doesn't, if that doesn't pass, we're going down a path that the local home is going to deteriorate and this is doomsday, it's not going to be good for the district. That's my prediction, it's not going to be good for the district. So, we get down to a point where the school building's no longer feasible, we don't have any other places we could put our students. That means you've got to start going out to other districts and putting tuition agreements in place because you can't have a school district without our school. That is our anchor school, okay? So, a lot of people don't understand that. It's going to cost a lot. No doubt about that and I'm sensitive to that just like anyone else is, but it's going to improve the value of our community. No doubt about it. So, I'm not supposed to be advocating for it, but I want to tell you, but this is the truth. This is what's been happening. All right? Upset.
Upset.
I don't see anything wrong with putting out there that one way or the other, something's going to have to be done with the Tona. And if it's going to cost $35 million to renovate or it's going to cost $70 million to build a new one with reimbursement, so the cost ends up coming in within $5 million of each other, I think that's perfectly legitimate to try to somehow blast out to the community. And unfortunately, people are uninterested in these general votes until they start seeing real, you know, if there's no numbers in it coming down, the idea that they have a pocketbook.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know if there's some way to get, you know, I know like Mark Straub has a Facebook page for Dalton where he generally posts a lot about different votes and information. And there's a way to get some sort of short informational piece that he can put out there for his community group, that kind of thing, to get people to understand what's really happening and not just, yeah, it's about, you know, slapping a coat of paint and fixing the roof versus, you know, spending pie in the sky.
All right. Last one.
Thank you. Mr. Armakos, I was just wondering if you could briefly articulate the repercussions, if you will, of a no vote from the perspective of state funding, that is to say, building this.
If we have a vote, what happens? So, all of our attempts to, to get the building approved as we're proposing it to the community on April 6th. If those don't go through, we lose the state funding, period.
Right.
And we're put back into the queue and the queue's at least 10 years long. And I know, I know for a fact, or at least I've heard that you're really not looking upon favorable is that the MSBA is going to say, well, they, a lot of times it's going to have to pass, confusing after change in order to, to affect a different vote. I think that's kind of their philosophy. And we had the statement of interest out there for I don't know how many years, at least a half a dozen for where we are now. We resubmit it every year. And it is, you get, you go to the bottom of the list.
Right.
And there's a lot of schools in the rest of the state that you get funding from the MSBA.
I'm getting a second bite at that apple. Yeah.
Just last.
So, the important thing is, is if this doesn't pass and then we go for money for renovations and that doesn't pass, then eventually the school is open for its, you know, team is unsafe. We're going to have to send up a case to another school, but it'd be nice to know what the numbers would be because the S would be very expensive, you know? So, we need to put that off to the green as well, you know? You're going to be paying for something, you know? If you don't, you know, not using your renovations, you're going to change, you know, at the end anyway.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think the baseline, you know, is at least 30, I don't know, against the school. And we're talking, the roof has to be changed, all the windows, the whole boiler, the heating infrastructure, and I, you know, that just goes out.
I'm just hoping for a little school or for our, for this, but you know, both of those sales, a lot of the roof is expensive, you're paying all the system of tools that you're, which is going to be very expensive every year, you know, which the house people are going to have.
That's, that's not going to be choice and it's going to be tuition, tuition agreements, which is going to be, yeah, expensive.
I would just like to remind everybody as well that where this money comes from is from sales tax of the state, so we've all paid into this general fund. And if our community doesn't take it, other communities do. So, we've been paying for a long, long time and might as well get some reimbursement for our sales tax dollars in this community.
I just wanted to say with the renovation, you're not getting a 21st century school. You're renovating the building.
Right. Anyone else? Keep your eyes on the box.
Well, I see if you, if you go to the end of the list and you have to wait 10 years, I mean, another building is going to be, I don't know, how many, how many more? So, you're, you're really going to be in a terrible mess many a time.
All right. Are these schools because you're going to be up 20, 30, 40?
All right, the House reports, appropriations.
So, just really quickly, because after the budget presentation, that would be a lot of information to saturate, so I will just highlight a few things. The monthly level, that's just something I've been including to keep you in the loop. I also linked an article from Berkshire Eagle about a classroom every week at NESCAS, a social studies classroom done in Amish in grade seven. We are doing some very hard, intense work at NESCAS to make some significant changes and to, to see the results in student achievement, but we also want to highlight positive things that are happening and continue to, to build morale and, and support the, the work that's happening. So, take a look at that if it happened already. Also, we did set a date for parent university. There will be, the way that it will be is sort of like a workshop session for parents based on the survey we conducted where we found a lot of interest. And they'll be able to select different workshops based on the topics that they identify interest in. I did list those for you. Several of them will be presented by people that we, we collaborate with the community such as Chief Co. and Trupa Kanada. Others will be by our own staff as well. And we will include something on the school building project. Cynthia Merrill is going to keynote it, which I think will be a nice touch. She's a literacy and educational consultant. She focuses on instructional technology. She's done some training in the district and she is extremely knowledgeable both from the perspective of a educator, but also as a parent. She's the parent of Liv who did our keynote at the beginning of the year, who's an advocate, first-term voice and speaks all over the country. Kathy may know, she may be speaking all over the world right now. She's probably left the country by now, but I think that'll be, be really a great evening for us to really give, give back to our parents with the information that we often take for granted that we have about the decisions we make educationally. So, I will certainly be giving more information about that. We will be doing more informational updates on NESCAS as we get further into the turnaround of work, but I really want to make sure people are very familiar with the four turnaround practices. Bonnie highlighted several of them in her report from the session that she was in, so they'll sound familiar. But we also are working with School Works as Dr. Pratt, Reese mentioned, and we will get a really objective analysis of our data. It will help to develop some action plans. So, you'll hear updates from curriculum as well as at some point directly from principal white to the full committee. The other thing I just wanted to highlight very quickly is that the presentation on instructional coaching has been moved, but I think for a really good reason. We're actually not going to do that until February 28th. The reason being is that I want you to get the perspective of Leslie who's really spearheaded and oversees this, but also Patty Roby who's our instructional coach and Sean Therrien. And then our, our, one of our, I want to say our key player, because they're all key players, but I really want you to hear from a teacher. And Colleen Traeger who is a fifth grade teacher at Craneville and very actively supportive of the coaching and receiving of the coaching will be here as well. And we'll talk from a teacher's perspective, so to get all four of those people available February 28th. But I really want you to hear from a teacher what it feels like to be coached, because coaches can tell you, but that's obviously only one perspective. Make sense? Is that okay? Like, did I have the date wrong again?
No, but it's, but Colleen is from Beckett.
Yeah. Oh, what did I say?
Crane.
Oh, I moved, oh gosh, Mary, he's like... Don't you take my teachers. No kidding. Yes, so that, I thought that was just important to have that. Thank you. I knew I said something. I'm like, what did I say? I knew it. Thank you very much. Colleen Traeger from Beckett, Dr. Therrien, Patty and Leslie. So, you've got to wait a little bit, but I figured it worked the way. So, are we okay to start the budget? Mr. Armakos? Okay, great. So, after a lot of hard work, I cannot emphasize enough, the budget is a team effort, but it is a team effort where the vast majority of the heavy lifting is done by this woman right here, Melissa Velkowsky, worst tirelessly, tirelessly on this budget, the last through the holiday season and really is incredibly skillatic, but it is very, very time consuming, intense, sometimes isolated. Very isolating work. So, the, the real heavy lifting here is absolutely done by our assistant superintendent and she deserves a quota for that. So, to give her a little bit of a, a break, she's going to be doing the second half of the presentation. I will do the first half of the presentation. She will certainly add as needed and vice versa when she takes over. But, so our FY '20 initial budget that I do present to you as the superintendent's budget, so as a school committee, you can take on your role to work through that, to bring it forward eventually for adoption into the towns. We do have a budget presentation largely consistent with the budget presentations we have been doing together now for four years. So, the format has not changed very much. Your books are considered well, so hopefully you're getting some familiarity. We do have one additional slide this year of budget detail due to the unique nature of the year in which we can receive a financial allocation, what's called rural aid. So, we will talk about that in that slide.
Melissa, will you get a chance to do this, go through this book?
Yes, absolutely, good idea. So why don't we actually do that right now? Because this is really kind of your, your guide of the information, and we'll do that before we even get started, so in case we reference anything, you'll have an idea.
So if you, if you open the book, we do this every year, we try to give updating information on things that are important to operating a school district. There's revenue updates, there are revolving account updates, there's grant updates, there's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updates in here. But if you go through the first tab, you have the superintendent's letter about the budget, a tab sequence that tells you what's in this book, and then each tab is, has what's behind it. So admin is just, it's the school committee members, it's the administrative team of the district, including principals, directors, central office personnel. The next tab is school improvement plans, and that, those were all presented, right? They were presented in the fall, but this is a hard copy for you. The regional agreement of the district and the seven towns. E and D material, so the first page will give you some information on excess and deficiency, and really what that is sort of like, you can equate it to free cash of a town, in a way. If you end the year with excess, you have an E and D fund, and that's what was certified just last month. DESI information, within the DESI information, there's quite a bit of information that talks about school and district profiles, our teacher data, we have age, race, things like that in the teacher data, class size, net school spending. The state has a level of spending that a district must meet. If you're above net school spending, everything's fine. If you're below, you have to raise your expenses to meet the net school spending. And we are above net school spending. And then we have enrollment and per pupil expenditures. The per pupil expenditures are detailed by year, going back to two thousand and eleven, and then we also have regional comparisons going back to the same year, two thousand and nine for the region. There's school choice information, number of students coming in, number of students going out, amount of assessment, amount of school choice revenue, anticipated fund balances for school choice. You've got some information that just tells you what the district, charter schools is the next tab, and that, again, are students who opt to go to charter schools. There is some explanation as to how charter school tuition is reimbursed. It's over a four or five-year period. First year a child goes, you get a hundred percent back. Every year after that, it drops. So if you look at the budget, you'll see a charter school assessment that's very high, and a reimbursement that's very low. That's because we have children who've been in the charter school system, so our reimbursement rate is very low. School census, that's enrollment data, and there's historical data in that tab as well. The fleet schedule are, are all the vans, pickup trucks, things like that that we have here in the district. Guidelines, has a printed version of the budget guidelines and instructions. Those were voted and approved in October. The budget calendar, which gives you a timeline of the district, budget count, budget timeline, then the Massachusetts budget process, so that you know how that works. So that starts in January, well, the presentations are in February. The governor does not have to have to budget up until the fourth, Wednesday, January. And they have even more, they're going to be up there. So sometimes you don't get information until at some point in February. So that gives you an overview of the mass of the state. We include historical data that lists enrollment, staffing, foundation enrollment, E and D appropriation, state aid, revenue sources. We have a section on grants. This year, we're including information on the purpose of the grant, as well as the numbers associated with the grant. FY eighteen, FY nineteen, and anticipated FY twenty. Revolving accounts, these are special revenue funds that, for instance, use of facilities if a business or a person in the community wants to rent a room, or the gym, or the auditorium at any of our schools. We have a fee schedule, and that money goes into a revolving account, which is like a checking account, and that's called revolving special revenue, and you have history on that. There's a separate section on athletics. And this year, we've included some information on the types of programs, the championships that have been won over the last year, our participation rates, and then athletics is also, has a revolving fund, and that revolving fund comes from gate receipts and user fees that are charged. And then the operating budget also supports athletics, so you'll see those two budgets in there. The next tab is the chart of accounts. This helps you know what all those numbers mean in the budget. So when you look at an accounting system, we have to separate out to report for the state, the expenditures at Beckett-Washington, the expenditures at Kittredge, the expenditures at Mesecus, and every other building and program that we have. So that allows, the, the string of numbers really is a language, and it, it tells you what fund it's coming from, what building the funds were spent, what type of expenditure it was. And so that whole book that you receive, the budget that you receive, that has all the line items, actually tells us where the funding is being spent, and that's how it's reported to the state. So this gives you some information on what those numbers mean. Then there's tabs for the upcoming budgets, the final, the tentative, and then the tab that has the initial, has the initial budget unless you received a printed copy already. If you did, put that in here, if you, if you would like. Behind the typical budget, there's also a budget broken down by cost center. So in this budget, which is behind the blue page in the initial budget section, you can see the budget, anticipated budget for Beckett, for Kittredge, for Mesecus, Wilcona Central Office, Technology, Student Services, they're all in there. So it's broken out, so you can see the totals and where that funding is going. There's also a copy of last year's budget, so you can take a look at it and compare if you so choose. The next section has, it's called PEAP, which we affectionately call PEAP, but it's property and equipment improvement plans. And that is a five-year plan going out as to what we feel is necessary in our buildings and with equipment, and it's a fluid document, it's a living document, it changes as needs change and priorities change, but that's in there for you. And along with that, there's an FY eighteen completed projects list, so you can see what was done with some of the buildings last year. And then there's just some informational school building data, size of building, age of building, renovations done, and so on. And as we have updates or anything is revised in here, I'll bring them to the meetings, and we'll pull and replace, or we'll add.
Any questions? Thank you very much, David.
Great, all right, we'll give Melissa a breather and continue forward based on that. So we always like to start with, and some of this was highlighted in the, in the letter that I drafted to kind of introduce the budget, with what our priorities are. We really want to always tie it back to the budget being something that is to support and continue to prioritize the strategic plan we have in place, while also being flexible to look at areas of concern that may develop, areas we want to focus more on, or areas we need to add as focus. What we really are looking at through this budget that you'll hear about is we have been trying now for several years, which it is a several-year process, is to really develop a robust tiered model of education for people I have not had this conversation with prior to tonight. A tiered model of education is really what you need to meet the needs of all learners. Tier one is your general education, so all of our students are general education students first, all of our students access general education. That is your classroom teachers, that is your instructional coach positions that we are looking at through those budget decisions that we make to make sure that we have a solid tier one. Students are receiving general education instruction from solid teachers, those teachers have the support they need through coaching. Tier two is your remediation level, that is responding to student needs that may develop for a multitude of reasons. We're fortunate in this district that tier two is supported now in all of our buildings by Title I funding, which is based on socioeconomic needs, and we're able to support the tier two remediation level that way. Tier two includes things like reading specialists, math interventionists, Title I tutors, things of that nature. And then, of course, our tier three, which is our special education model, that's for students who have a specific identified disability and need to be taught in a different way, and that would be in our special education staff. In this budget, as a result of continuing that work, but also directly in response to some of the data concerns that we do have, we are proposing to expand our coaching model. I should also say that in response to our data concerns we do have, but also in response to positive data that has shown instructional coaching works. So we've seen good data with our instructional coaching, we know that at our elementary level, we want to extend that where we have concerns specifically at our middle school level, increasing it. Additionally, universally designing learning environments, that's making sure that learning environments are set up to support the range of needs kids may have before they enter classrooms. So when we talk about what enhancements are in this budget to the educational model, we do have the addition of an instructional coach I want to highlight. I will say, the addition is of a K-12 instructional coach. We were very fortunate last year to have the, the foresightedness to add an instructional coach, and then once we received our data, we applied the coach where the data identified our need, primarily being at our middle school level. We do have coaching from our coaching principals at Beckett and Kittredge, and we've seen positive results from that. The reason that this is proposed as a K-12 instructional coach is because we won't receive the data till well after this budget is approved, in order to decide really where specifically that coach should be assigned and what their schedule should look like. This budget also includes the addition of a fourth special education teacher at Craneville. Last year, we did move up a special education teacher to Mesecus. Our two large schools at Mesecus and Craneville, at Mesecus and Wilcona already have four special ed teachers, and really see a need for that fourth special ed teacher at Craneville in order to put as many kids as possible, as possible, in front of certified teachers in all of our tiers. So our special education teachers providing instruction as much as possible, as opposed to paraprofessionals, who have a role, but special education teachers are definitely the instructional staff we want in front of kids as often as possible. Additionally, maintenance of the tier instructional model, we have built over the course of the past three budgets, so you don't care in this budget of changing any of that or reducing what we've already built, we're continuing forward. Staffing revisions, just to give a clear understanding of what this specifically means for the overall staffing. So again, I mentioned before, an addition of a special education teacher at Craneville. You might be saying, and I'll, I'll talk to this, right after this presentation, I see an addition of a fourth special education teacher at Craneville on the agenda for tonight. That is accurate, we are proposing that as part of the proposal of how to use rural aid, that we would add that fourth special ed teacher at Craneville now, as opposed to waiting. If we, if we move on this and it's approved tonight, we could potentially have a fourth special education teacher on staff at Craneville before the February break. That would be ideal, especially going into the spring testing period, to have that solid instructional model in tier three. Craneville has a solid tier two right now, we were very fortunate to out of math specialists last year, we have two Title I interventionists as well, and a reading specialist, but we really feel that that, that fourth special ed teacher will make, make a difference. For next year, we've mentioned that we're still seeing smaller class sizes go into Mesecus. I want to be very, very clear on something, we are not reducing staff at Mesecus, that would not be the, the goal of this. Mesecus has needs, we need the staff that we need to address those needs. We literally have sections of kids going through where I have a content teacher and no kids to put in front of them, so it doesn't matter, the person is not helpful, they don't have a role. So Mesecus has the roles they need, but if someone doesn't have a role, there's not a reason for them there. We do have that situation with some staff at Mesecus. As a result, we have a staff member at Mesecus who will replace one of our, our Title I tutors that we have, and will work in an intervention role in one of our elementary schools. That is the only reduction in that budget. It's not an actual reduction to, to kids, or to staffing, or to FTEs, but it's a, I'm sorry, it's a reduction of one Title I tutor for an FTE. Kids won't fail it, because it will be replaced with a certified teacher. Does that make sense? So you'll see the reduction in the budget, but nothing's going away, it's a certified professional who will now be doing that model. Again, I put that here, there is a likelihood that will go here, but I'm going to request flexibility, we don't know what our data will say. And sometimes, as we've talked about in curriculum, our data even changes over the course of the year with our edge elastics, but we are adding an instructional coach. The application of that coach will be highly based on the data that we, we receive at the end of the school year over the summer. At the high school level, we do have two retirements that will be filled with current district teaching capacity. So we have two teachers who, without these retirements, we would not have had roles for, we're very lucky, we have roles for them because we have two retirements. You don't see the full reduction of salaries for one of them, because it's a, a later retirement into the year. People don't always retire at the very last day of school. But ultimately, it will work out well at Wilcona for that, that, that reason. I've talked, before we do, I've talked to Chief Co., if this does go through, we get further along in the process, he and I together will be working very, very closely to develop an MOU of what this school resource officer will look like. He will advise us on candidates that might be a fit for us, and we would conduct interviews. But at this point, I'm really just telling you, this is in our budget. I have a number directly from Chief Co. that would support a part-time school resource officer, but we would really get into the details around that, should it be supported going forward, and that is in there. BCBA, I feel like that you might be saying your head feels like it's spinning, BCBAs are part of our tier three. Those are typically, sometimes tier two, but typically kids with disabilities who have very high levels of need, that beyond positive behavioral interventions and support model, beyond PBIS, need very specific behavior support plans. We hired a BCBA a while back, that person did leave the district, so we immediately needed to fill it, and we had to contract. So Melissa accurately moved the money, but our goal has always been to get somebody on staff, so we're going to try again to do that, but it's one of those positions, if you can't fill it, it's a legal requirement, you immediately would have to contract. So we're going to go back out this spring for a BCBA, try and bring one on staff. Increases and benefits, obviously the increases are in the salaries, we do have contractual increases, benefits, our health insurance increases. Again, we know that the number won't be solid until at least January twenty eighth is, is the date, the Berkshire Health Group will vote on it, and then we'll be able to reflect that accurately in the budget, but Melissa always conservatively estimates based on the past. The OPREP trust funding is again level funded with what the budget guidelines have directed and consistent with last year. So those are some of the increases that you'll see in the salaries and benefits. Increases to operational, we do have a transportation contract with a built-in increase that's reflected here. I do want to highlight this, I, I'm highlighting this, it is a concern for us, there are districts out there who have a concern like this in the millions. So this is really, this is not a reflection necessarily of changes within the district. The vast majority of what this is, is that when a student, or a student's family, or a student's foster care placement moves into one of our seven towns, whether both parents move in, or one parent moves in, or legal guardian, we own the tuition. So a student may have been living in Waymouth, Massachusetts, and while living in Waymouth, Massachusetts, they were placed in a residential program for special education needs at the cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and one of the parents, or both of the parents, decides to move to Beckett, Mass. That cost transfers to us. We don't have any say in the We don't have any say in the placement, we don't have any say in the decision that was made, that's also a part of the transportation. This is a moving number, just literally, like the moving people, who move in and out of the district. It will and could change, it could change tomorrow, if I get an email saying we have a new family in town, or a family that exited. So that's, it's, it's, it is a frustration, and I, you know I say that, as a special education administrator, at heart, it's not a frustration about the students and their needs, it's a frustration, these are not students that we're making educational decisions for, we're receiving a bill. So it's an issue, and definitely, we're seeing more and more families and foster placements and people moving from different areas that were placed in different programs prior to arriving. So just want you to be aware of that, that number, it could go up by a portion, it could go down, but it's really an outside of our control kind of number. The utilities, that's a pretty, a pretty direct one. The decreases, again, utility contracts. Unemployment expense obligation has gone down and down, it had a high probably five years ago, when we did have the closure of Berkshire Trail, but we have not had reductions or layoffs in quite several budgets, so it's been pretty low, and Melissa's consistently decreased it. This is not a decrease, what this is, is that Mr. White, Mr. Sturgis put forth a technology budget, the technology budget is what you see in the budget. We have proposed to apply $110,000, 115, $115,000 of rural aid to buy technology now, that they proposed for next year, to offset the expenses in next year's budget. You might do the math and say, there's another $20,000 missing, there is, we have grant funding that we have been writing technology into, so if Mr. Sturgis, or for that matter, if Mrs. Buckley, through Mr. White, or Mr. Sturgis has a need for a Chromebook cart in November of 2018, we don't wait to buy it in the next year's budget, we have Title I grant funding that can support that. So we've used some grants to buy some of the technology now as well. We can do that, because it's things, not people, so we'll have it. Retiree health turns, it's just changes in the participants in the plans. So again, when you look at it, last year, I believe it was a 1.65% increase at this stage. So last year, we came to you, we're standing here, I don't know, January 10th, with a 1.65% increase, right now, we're at 1.31. We ultimately got to a 1.15, when everything was said and done. So we're coming in slightly lower, but the variance is $357,727, and excited that it does include some things that I really think are necessary, specifically in what I've I feel like I went to a slide before I wanted to go to that one, but I'm going to take you off a little sooner than I thought you would be.
You're going to take me off on the next slide.
Oh my God, you're going to take me off on the next slide.
So these are the revenue projections that we have at this moment, and they're very preliminary, we don't have any information from the state, we don't have net minimum contributions for each of our towns, we don't have Chapter 70, which is the state aid number, we don't have that, we don't have reimbursement figures. So there's a lot that remains the same at this point, because we just don't have the information that we need to put an accurate revenue figure up there. But what we do know is that Chapter 70, last year's final was 8,708,909. We're getting a little bit more this year, so what I've done is, not much more, a few thousand, so I've taken that number and added the $20 minimum per pupil that we've been getting each year, and estimating that our Chapter 70 will be around 8,726, a little bit higher than last year. Chapter 71, which is the transportation reimbursement, I think we're right in the ballpark for 856, or 854 this year, so I think it will remain level, and I'm conservative in this area, because the state may give you 70% reimbursement on your charges of the prior year. If they have revenue issues, they drop it down to 60%, so it's, it's better to be conservative there, rather than to overshoot that number. In the last few years, we've been able to take funds and put them into a transportation revolving fund, and this year, from the FY '18 budget, we were able to put in 400,000, which is a decrease from the year before, of 50,000, but that money will be applied to offset transportation expenses, and thereby assessments in the end. Charter school reimbursement, I've held it level, because we don't know at this point. We'll get the number from the state probably in a couple of weeks. The contingency revenue is, is put in there so that if we do receive additional revenue, we have offsetting charges, that it's, it's covered in this budget, we don't have to come back and amend the budget. Interest income, that, we've been getting, we have a lot of funding in MMDT, which is a large bank, and their interest rate has been very good over the last year or so, so we are seeing an increase in our interest earnings, so I've applied that here, so it's gone up by 7,000. Medicaid reimbursement, it comes in every year, about 125 to 135, couple of years, we had 146,000, so I think that that'll be in the same ballpark. Miscellaneous income is income that we receive, say, from, if we purchase something, and we, we send a PO through, something was defective, we send it back, they give us a check back as a credit versus another product, that gets all thrown into this miscellaneous income, and that is part of the general fund. And then the E and D appropriation, the budget guidelines state that we should, if we have E and D over a million, which we know that we have 1.372 million, we take and apply everything but 250,000 of that E and D account to revenue, which helps reduce the assessments to our towns. So we do that, and that number this year is 1122136. So with these numbers, we're estimating at this juncture preliminarily, that town assessments will increase by 325,000, so they'll go to 616,228, but that number is fluid, if we get more revenue than what I've anticipated, that number goes down. So it's all connected, and revenue figures have an impact on assessments.
So we have, so to fully understand the entire budget, and also, we are on a time crunch, we need to have an understanding of rural aid, I believe we do, as a committee, have a full understanding, but I do want to review it, just to make sure that there is an understanding of what we're talking about when we say rural aid. So we're very fortunate, it is somewhat of a time crunch in how it was delivered, and there are questions about the manner in which maybe it was received, but we're very fortunate, we're very grateful to the work of Senator Hines, Superintendent Bonacanti from Mohawk, and the work that they did, really championing this over several years, to ultimately achieve a $1.5 million budget allocation for rural aid in this current fiscal year. That must be spent by June 30th of this current fiscal year, that's very important, cannot be carried over, it cannot be used next year. They would say, the burning question is obviously, are we going to get it next year? They would say there's a very, very strong likelihood of that. That is not what they were aiming for, that's significantly lower than what they were aiming for, and so obviously, their anticipation is that we will get it again, and that it will increase, however, we have no solid information to support that. What I can tell you is that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, just recently, they are requiring that, as the superintendent, I submit a report about how we are using it, and part of that report requires a three-year plan, so you know, you could get optimistic and say the Department of Ed's talking about three years, why? But the other part of it that often comes up is, are there strengths? There are not. What there is, is that the report that I have to submit has to talk about how, over the next year, the next three years, we will consider consolidation, efficiencies, and collaboration. They actually list examples, and one of the examples is getting a committee together to look at it. So the strings, if you will, are not strings that are hard, they might be loose, in that they're requiring you look into things. They're not requiring specifically anything about how you use this money. So I'll give you an example, in Mohawk Valley, Mohawk Regional School District, where Superintendent Bonacanti is, they bought one-to-one Chromebooks for their students, they did not have them, they felt that it would increase the benefit to kids, and they bought them this year. We got a significantly larger allocation, that needs to be noted, than a lot of districts. So I was talking to Peter Dillon at Berkshire Hills about how they're using it, they got $19,000. We have $246,000. So obviously, in the interest of transparency, this needs to be brought to this committee, we're going to be discussing it in finance, but we do need to make a proposal as to how it will be used, and it must be extended by June 30th. So we have done that here. Just to remind you, why did it work out this way for us, that we were at the top of that list? It's provided to 33 districts with below the state average per capita income, and with less than 11 students per square mile, that's five of our towns, so, we won, so priority one, that was not, so yeah, so wow.
We won, priority one.
Yeah, Peter Dillon found out, and poor I did, he was like, did you hear? You guys are, so, so really, we're very grateful, but Melissa and I really tried to look at is what made sense, what we could propose that really made sense, was sustainable, and would make a difference in the assessments going forward. So really, I have a breakdown here, again, by June 30th, this is how we would be proposing the allocation of the funds, we are going to discuss this at finance. We have been talking for quite some time with Truppa Kanata, previous to the Mocona school building project, about his concerns, which I share, and I know our principals do, of the security of the entryways in our three elementary schools. They're wide open, there's not an ability to come in, drop something off, and not need to enter the school. So for logistics, we have way too much traffic flow, but for security, we don't have stop gate, and we know that's a huge priority at the new Nessus, at the Nessus, at the new Mocona. Nessus has a physical structure that could be navigated, the elementaries need some work. Truppa Kanata has looked at the plans that we have, and is supportive of them, as has, I believe, Chief Coe, and we would certainly be likely sharing that with the committee that Mr. Hagmeyer was talking about through policy. But what we would propose is, if possible, and it's supported, April vacation would be ideal, if not, we'd have to do it right after school gets out, because again, have to expend it by June 30th. We propose, this is a great opportunity to avoid a potential future cost in the budget, it's a one-time expense, it would make a big difference for student and staff safety, and we could get that done. So that's the cost associated to do that. Again, I mentioned, I am proposing that we add the fourth special education teacher at Craneville. One of the concerns is that we add things that we then can't support if rural aid doesn't come back. We've already added that into next year's budget, that would not be an issue. Offsetting technology needs was the other one, Rick, Mr. White, and Mr. Sturgis, they have their needs, they predict out quite, quite far, and we're able to offset costs they can start buying now. The other thing that Mr. Sturgis has brought up in the past, there's a real rush when all this stuff comes in, and they're unpacking everything, we can do that in stages now, get some things in, and be doing this in portions, rather than the August kind of Christmas morning, that doesn't really quite feel like Christmas morning to him, but there's tons and tons of stuff trying to get out. That would be ideal. The last one is that we had planned to have to lease a special education van, this is kind of part of our rural nature as well.
It was in the budget last year.
Was in the budget, to lease a special education van, and this year, 17.5 a year to lease it, and that would be an ongoing cost. Not only would it benefit special ed, it would also benefit our really small groups that are going out to different activities, for clubs, things of that nature, that Jared Shannon would be able to access it for. So we're proposing that we would buy that, and that we would have that now, it would not be a budget cost going forward. So that, these two are really highlighted, just to kind of, however you think about this, and I know, and I've had conversations with some of you, there are different ways people think and look at rural aid, but however you do, and however you want to, this is kind of one-cost things right now, this was going to be in the budget anyways next year, this is the things that actually you'll see a reduction in the budget for next year, as a result of. So just so you know that and see that, I think is important. So this is always just kind of showing you the breakdown of where the increases are. I won't get too into ones that are very minimal, this is, we've added, sometimes it's just worth explaining, while this is the cost center of where it is, what the increase is, is that we have Power School, we don't have Power School for online registrations, so you should be able to register your child online for school. So the addition in the cost of Power School is in my line item, because we all know, Power School is overseen by Mr. Buono, so, and he lives in my world, so Superintendent's office is where that is. This is just an accounting adjustment of a salary that really belonged in this section, as opposed to a different one. Technology, we talked about where that is, that's not a decrease in what we're getting in technology, in fact, technology actually has more in evidence had in the past, because for the first time, and we're trying to figure out, but at least, at least our time here, Melissa's time being longer than mine, we have three full-time staff members in this budget for technology. In my time here, we've never run with more than 2.5. We've always had a full-time employee in Joe Sturgis, we had a part-time employee in Paul Jacoby, who retired, and then we had a full-time employee in Rick White. This year, we had a part-time employee really in Rick White, because we were sharing him with Adam Cheshire, and we had a full-time employee in Joe Sturgis, and a new employee who replaced Paul Jacoby at full-time. This has a 3.0, so it'll be the first time we've had that.
Sounds like we should also include one more, should be 4.0. We've done a lot of work on this one, I believe, for school districts.
So my proposal is, again, what we have in the budget, and I do just want to make sure we are clear that we do not have a shared service agreement with John Vosberg for next year, and Adam Cheshire, that would be a decision they'd have to express interest in entering into, I don't have confidence that will happen at this time. But if it did, I bring shared services agreements to you, you vote on them, and at this point, I'm not doing that. So District Y, primarily, again, same situation, contractual increases, adjustments that are fairly minor there, as far as that is. I do want to say the school resource officer is in District Wide, that's a factor, and there's another one in District Wide I always forget. School resource officer, what's our other big one in District Wide? Oh, she, she's been working way too hard to be able to do that, that's not fair, I should be able to do that. But the school resource officer is in District What? All right, we're going to go to the next one. School leadership is, so, school leadership is very minor. Elementary ed, that's the adjustment of a teacher going down, a teacher is paid higher than the Title I tutor, so even though you see a reduction, there's a small increase. Middle school ed, it's really important, that is the staff going to replace opening position, open positions at the high school.
The buses.
Buses, I know it was a, not to say a boring one, but one that you think of a little bit more than I do. So special ed is the BCBA in that place, and we have the fourth special ed teacher at Craneville. These are primarily minor, I do want to highlight, we had a nurse last year go down to a .5, we have, we have a full-time nurse in every building, but we actually had an additional part-time. Last year, that happened, and we just didn't reflect it, because it happened after the budget, that was all that that was really. See, if there's anything else I didn't highlight, that's of any overall substance. Anything you wanted to highlight, Melissa?
No, Melissa, just that the benefits include the health insurance, and that's the bulk of that increase there.
Did you want to highlight any in operations?
Just the increases in the, we're actually seeing very high increases in telephone costs and water and sewer. In particular, the town of Hinsdale actually changed the way that they bill for water, and it went up about four times what we're typically paying. So that's probably half of that increase, and in the operations part, is that.
So this, this slide, this slide, Mr. Stevens, look away. It's just a visual of kind of how our budget is overall broken down. Get the correlation here?
Can I see? This is, this was my grandchild, but I thought that I could sort of, rather than just show you a graph, try to tell you visually where our, the bulk of our budget is allocated to, so salaries, we're a service organization, so 14.5 million, or 52% of the budget, is for salaries. 26% goes to benefits, so you're looking at 78% of the budget is salaries and benefits. Then, transportation is high, special education services is high, and operations and maintenance, minus the salaries, now that's just for operation of the buildings, no salaries, is at 3%. Those are the five major expenditure items. So, aside from the upgrading budget, we also have, you heard me talk about special revenue when I was going through the budget. when I was going through the budget book. We have other sources of revenue. We have federal grants. We receive state grants. We apply for and receive private grants. So we have an estimated amount for next year, at this point, of 1.1 million of total grants. And a lot of this is used for salaries, professional development, contracted services. But we do have some of the federal grants, in particular, the special ed grants will pay for salaries. Then we also have school choice. Now, the net revenue is, and I put a net revenue up there, because we have assessments and we have revenue. As of December, our revenue is higher than our assessments. We had been trending the opposite. And we were in the negative by about 3,000 a month last year and the beginning of this year. With the new numbers in December, we're seeing a change around, and we're actually in the positive. So I anticipate that we'll be in the positive between the assessment and the revenue of 77,000. Circuit Breaker, which is a special ed services reimbursement. We are receiving this year, the way that we, we work with Circuit Breaker is we receive the funds in from the prior year in this year. We don't expend them this year. We keep them. We have a year to spend them. We keep them and use them for the following year budget. So that we know exactly what we have in that account, that we can allocate to other parts of special ed. So the special ed budget that you see is, would be $353,000 higher, had we not had this revenue set aside, so that we can apply it to those cost items. Athletics and student activities, that, this is the revolving account. Gate receipts, user fees, things of that nature going here. And the revolving account pays for R A F's game officials. Some transportation, we've moved that over into the operating. And we're moving supplies into here, because they're sort of the same amount that we pay. But that pays for actual game operations. And then food services, the cafeterias, and the revenue, maybe it's about 610,000 in there. That's not profit, that's just revenue. It costs almost that to run it. We have been lucky where we're running a little bit better than expenditures. And we have a healthy fund balance, but that's what we think we'll see in food service. So total revolving, 982. Total of special revenue sources then would be 2.131 million. That's on top of the 27,766 that you saw as the operating. This also helps to run the district. So you're looking at 29, almost 30 million to run the district.
And this is directly tied to that increase in tuition costs. So it's, I don't even know what you want to call it. It's not, it's an unfunded mandate by and large, because it's not at 100%, nor has it ever been.
Like 60 of that.
So, so what it essentially is, though, most people have an understanding, but what Circuit Breaker is, is that if you have a student whose costs are more than four times the average per pupil's cost to educate them, the difference between that, would say foundation is what it's called, say if it's $40,000, it's probably higher than that now.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, I'm dating myself, is $45,000. And if the student's cost is $250,000 to educate them, you're going to get 60-some-odd percent of the difference.
The difference, yes.
That's the, in some ways, I guess you'd say, say the silver lining of it. However, it's obviously not the full percent by any means. And there are districts in really tough shape because of that. You might be hearing of that in the media right now, with some of those conversations around the Tales of Two Cities, those kinds of things that have been out there.
The way that we apportion operating expenses to the seven-member towns per the regional agreement is that we use a five-year rolling average of enrollment. So, in the budget, you'll see the, the assessment page that has the enrollment by town for the five years, a total for the five years, an average for the five years, and then their percentage of the operating and transportation assessments. So, you can read the bottom line, Beckett has 8.89%. The largest town is Dalton, which has 60.16%. And that's a five-year rolling average. It's important to note that, because when we get to the capital assessments, that's not a five-year rolling average. So you'll see different numbers there. That's a snapshot of the October 1 enrollment that gets applied to the next year's capital assessment. So, we can't, it would be very preliminary to guess at what our town assessments will be at this point. But I've put this up here for, just for reference really, to say, this was their last year's required local contribution by town. This was their last year's approved net town assessment. So when we do our assessments, we have an operating assessment, and we have a transportation assessment. And the operating assessment is, what is the remaining part of our budget after all aid is received, subtracting what the towns are required to pay by the state? And the difference in the operating assessment is the percentage applied to that difference. So, you'll see, you know, the required local contribution for Beckett is 1.6 million. But their actual assessment, because our budget doesn't equal $10 million, and that's what the 10.5 is the minimum that towns can pay. According to the state, our budget equals much higher than that, so their assessments are. But that's, we're estimating at this point, an increase of 2.85% in the assessments. 1.31 in the overall budget, 2.05 in the, in the assessments. But again, those numbers change as we get revenue figures. And I'm very conservative, we're very conservative at this stage of the game. So most likely, although you can't, I can't say for sure that they'll decrease, but most likely they will, once we have the revenue. So aside from the operating assessments and the operating budget, we also have the capital budget. And the capital budget is the budget that, the assessments to our towns for capital projects that have been approved in the past, that are being paid as long-term debt now. So we probably have about six, maybe seven projects that are included in this. Some will be dropping off in 2022, some will be dropping off in 2025, when they're paid off. But the capital assessment is broken out by students from the town in the building with the project. So that's why these percentages, well, I don't have the percentages up there, but when you see the, the full budget, you'll see percentages, and they're different from the operating percentages. And so we have an increase this year of just $3,000, and that is due to the feasibility study. Paying that is due. We'll have it online tomorrow.
Okay, the last thing we have, last topic under Superintendent for recommendations, is a recommendation by the superintendent.
Sure, so that, the recommendation really is for the fourth special education teacher at Craneville. I really appreciate the support to move forward with that now. Think it'd be a good benefit for the building. Yes, it's beautiful, smiling. They give you a real benefit for, for that building, and leveling up their tiers sooner than later.
Okay, so a member please make a motion.
We have resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the addition of a special education teacher at Craneville Elementary School through June 2019, with use of rural aid funds.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for a recommendation to hire a special education teacher at Craneville. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing that all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tensions? If she carries. Okay. Does that conclude the superintendent's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The superintendent's made notes of some personnel changes in the district. And we have no old business for new business. I'm not aware of any tonight. But if you're interested in having anything at our next meeting, please let me know. We'll speak, we have our agenda meeting next week, early next week. And we'll conclude with the Mars Legislative Committee. If we have anything they want to report. Nothing? Okay, I do have one topic. Tuesday, we had a, I was way down south when it happened, so, but we had a difficult day weather-wise. It was one of those things that had turned cold, I understand, very rapidly. So it was hard to make a good, we didn't have enough information for the call that morning. So I think we had to go with what we had. The one issue I have to bring up, and I'm going to be sending a note to all of our towns, that the superintendent has, the superintendent, the administrative office watches weather constantly. Especially this time of year, when we, you know, trying to anticipate snowstorms and be able to make a good call on that. But Lori and Melissa, right, they're up at 4:00 in the morning. They go, and you don't want to come wrong, but, you know, there's a lot of resources on the internet that they, that they go to to check for weather and see how it's going to look, not only at the start of the day, but at the end of the day, too. We've got to consider the whole day, in terms of trying to figure out what's going to happen. Sending kids to school these days on a bad day is a tremendous liability. It's always been a liability, but we take these things more seriously now than, than we did 30 or 40 years ago. So we're more conservative these days, and we don't want to send kids out on bad days, obviously. And it's not good for, you know, the staff, for everybody that's involved in the school. We want to minimize their exposure to the weather. So they start looking at the weather at 4:00 in the morning, making calls to other superintendents in the county. They talk in the county about what the weather is, because oftentimes, it's a broad weather event. The other thing they do is they call all the highway superintendents in each of the towns. So that's probably the, the most critical information that we have for them to make a decision about whether or not to call school or delay school. We've, we've, we've got some mixed reviews in terms of, some of the towns are really good about getting back to the superintendent or answering the phone right then and there. Others never get back to her. Others give, give the superintendent reports that are, that don't represent what's really going on in the town. So we had some towns with some roads that had some conditions that, that for whatever reason, the road superintendent did not anticipate. And we got ourselves in trouble. The buses, a lot of buses were late. I don't know if you want to add to this. So I'm going to go out to all the slide board members and town administrators and let them know that we need to have a road superintendent available at 4:00 in the morning, when there's going to be anticipated weather, ready to make a call from the superintendent. Because if one town says no, the district's done for the day. Or if one town says, "Give us two hours, we'll have the roads, you know, ready." Means plowed, sanded, to allow safe passage of the buses, to allow safe passage of all the staff. That's what we need. So we really need the town's cooperation to keep the students and our staff safe. So that's going to go out pretty soon. Okay? Does anyone want to add a remark to that?
I don't know what happened as far as the communication breakdown. But in my assessment, it wasn't the fault of the superintendent as to what happened. I mean, I woke up at 6:00 in the morning, everything looked okay outside. I know there are kids in my neighborhood that get on the bus for Wakona and, and Nescus. And even, I talked to one of the parents, it was fine. And then just in that small timeframe, all of a sudden, the weather just, you know, ground got covered. But there were no plows out. I did not see eight plow anywhere in my neighborhood until about 8:15. And, I mean, that's just, you can't, if it's going to start snowing, there were plows. The plow woke me up the morning before at 5:45, and there was nothing on the ground. So I don't know where, what, how that.
I think the same thing happened in my town, where the plow's down on the road, when there's only been a dusting. So I don't know what they're doing.
That's in all that, and there was scraping the day before.
It was, and there was nothing until 8:15, 8:20 on that morning. We really needed a plow.
It took one pass down the road, and the road was perfect.
Yeah, literally perfect. Because luckily, one of, someone right on my street came down and said, she warned us that the buses were really delayed. So we went and did car line instead of waiting for the buses, because we didn't know what time they were going to get there. But it just, I don't know why the plows weren't out, or deciding not to, or what happened. But I think that was the break. And I defended the school district when I saw posts about, you know, this should have been a two-hour delay. And it wasn't just this district.
Oh, no, my colleagues got beat up. Jake McHillis.
Yeah. Oh, late, I saw other districts, you know, saying, you know, why wasn't this called? Like, if the buses already go out to pick up the high school and middle school students, done. Too late, it's it, where school's going. So.
That's what I think Superintendent Kazin said, that we, that she needs to make a decision by 5:45.
That's it, 5:45. Again, I do have to say, I have, I have a handful of road superintendents who are incredible and take it so incredibly serious to give me input. And then they are consistent in that, once they say they're good, and I had confirmation from every road superintendent who I had communication with, that they were good, the roads were ready, and that they would be able to get the buses through safely. And we had no issues in any of those towns, and those are some tough towns to plow. So they were out there, and they were scrambling, and they were, they were making sure. Because once they tell me, they continue to text me, and then if we have bus issues, they're right over there, trying to make sure that they can help to navigate. But it's, it's an absolute drop dead deadline of 5:45, and everyone knows that. And so that's, that's the difficulty. As Chair McCaskey did say, we have had some communication issues. I have tried to address them. I had some other options that I pursued today, that I think might be helpful through Chief Co. To see if I can, can try and navigate that. I'm also asking people, when they have complaints, tell me roads, so I can be very specific, because that's, that's really helpful. But really, the process is that student safety and priority is the absolute number one, one decision-making factor. But what I will say is, is that that's the number one decision-making factor. And if I get a, "I need a delay," which they were all adamantly against. They actually felt the delay was the biggest concern, that they could get the buses through. That weather ban came way quicker than we thought it was going to be. We thought we'd be able to get the buses through, there'd be a little ban, then it would die down. That's why the entire county was open. The entire county was open. And people will say, "We have different weather." But in the towns, we have different weather. Those were the towns I had the confirmation, and we were fairly, fairly successful, for the most part. But what, what happens really is, is a drop dead deadline. But the other thing I do think of, is if I have no credible reason to close, 80-plus percent of our parents are not educators, and they're not stay-at-home parents. And they need me to have their kids in school. So if buses can pass safely, and my road superintendent say they can't, I've got to send the buses out to get kids to school, because parents need to be at work. So I just need good information, because I have no problem saying, "For parents who had to miss work, I couldn't safely transport your kid." But if I can safely transport your kid, and I made a call without any justification, I could see someone being frustrated. So I am going to try and improve that communication. I do think, regardless, I talked to Jake McHillis, this was just a tough one. He got beat up in Pittsfield, and he makes one call, and it still was just a tough one. But, so hopefully, between improving communication, and let's just get a lot of storms that make it really clear at like midnight, that we shall sleep in.
Really?
Terrible.
I was just going to echo Alan's comment. I don't think there's any need for blame. That was an extraordinarily unusual event.
Just keep looking, going, "Come on, stop, stop."
That heavy ban that came very quickly was not supposed to come that quickly. It was supposed to come when, if we called a two-hour delay, it would have hit right then and there. And so that's, the decision of two-hour delay was not, we thought, a good decision.
Look, I'm not arguing. I don't think I would have called a two-hour delay, having looked outside my window and seen what I saw when I woke up, because there was nothing to delay. And yeah, the weather was supposed to be, definitely come slower. And I, I don't envy your position, because every time, every snow day, it, it, everyone argues that the superintendents always make the wrong calls. Like, you think there's going to be like a foot of snow, and it doesn't happen. Like, "Oh, they called snow day for no reason." Like, "Well, you guys were on, you know, social media the night before screaming for a snow day." So.
Terrible, terrible.
I'm just going to change the subject here on a more positive note. One of our students is a student coach of a girls' basketball team. And I don't know if anybody saw it, but he made national media attention with a very clever play. It actually was aired on USA Today, where his girls were being, he's a coach of a youth basketball team. He's Dalton girls, about fifth and sixth grade. in Dalton Girls, about fifth and sixth grade.
It's so, my daughter's on the team. The tall girl in the video. It's Jake Hart. He's an amazing coach, he's a great kid. It's his third year coaching, and he's not officially the coach because he's not old enough, so they give an adult the title, but he's been running that team for three years now. And he does a great job. And they were, it was the championship game of the Boys and Girls Club Tournament, and in the county, this season with that age group, Pittsfield is three times better than anyone else. So our girls made it to the championship game, and that earned them the right to get pasted by Pittsfield. It was something in the range of 30 to 4. And this play, just to have fun.
Yeah, what the girls did was, I think what really chose is the creativity in the young man, as well as his priorities in the right place, because even though the girls got pasted by 30 points, they still had a lot of fun. And the play was just totally crazy play. All the girls just fell down on the floor to distract the defense, and one girl shot, she luckily shot, but it was interesting, it was just a really funny play. The video went, I don't know, went viral or whatever, but it was played on USA Today, national media. So, yeah, it's very interesting. But you guys should know about that, check it out if you wanna see it.
I coached fifth and sixth grade boys, how did they run? I'll catch up with you.
All right, is there anything else? Okay, entertain motion for a German.
So moved.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.